All right. By my watch, it's five o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call this regular scheduled meeting in the Santa Clara City Council the order. I want to thank everybody for being here, particularly the staff, since that seems to be the only ones in the audience. Opening ceremony and pledge of allegiance, we've asked councilman Wade to do that. Before we do that, I'm Mayor Rick Rosenberg. We have a full council present tonight. Councilman Jared Wade, Councilman Danny Drake, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Krista Hinton, Councilwoman Lena Mathis, and Councilman Ben Shakespeare. So without further ado, we'll turn the time over to Councilman Wade. But everyone, please rise and salute the flag.
Please follow. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're very grateful for this chance we have to be together as a council and as a community and staff. So grateful for this wonderful area we have to live in and for all the wonderful people that we have to serve. We ask the guidance in this meeting and pray we'll be able to make wise decisions and say things in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jared. Conflicts and disclosures, council, is there anything on the agenda tonight that you may have a conflict of interest in you need to disclose? I'll go ahead and disclose under general business C three, the firm I work for, prepared that final plat for desert village. Any other conflicts? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into the working agenda. There is a public hearing tonight, the public hearing to receive public input and discuss amending the Santa Clara City Park and Facility fees. We discussed it at length, council, do you have any questions for the staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and ask anyone who's come to comment on the amending the Santa Clara City Park and Facility fees, give them the opportunity to comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move into the item four B, the consent agenda. Council, you have your approval, the January twenty six, twenty twenty two executive session minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty two, regular city council meeting minutes. February ninth, twenty twenty two, executive session minutes and the claims through February twenty third. Note the calendar events, we have a work meeting on the second of March, or regular meetings on the ninth and the twenty third coming up. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion by Ben and a second by Jared to approve the consent agenda as presented. Many item roll call, Jared?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Is there a discussion? Do we need to discuss? No.
Aye.
Aye, Ben. The ayes have it five zero. Thank you, council. Item C one, this is consider approval of the resolution twenty twenty two dash O two R amending the Santa Clara City Park and Facility fees. Mr. Hayes. Anything to add to what's been presented previously? Any questions for Brad? Any questions for legal counsel regarding the resolution?
I'd look for a motion. I mean, move that we approve the park fees as discussed and presented.
I second that.
A motion by Danny and a second by Krista. This is a resolution, we'll do roll call vote, Ben.
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks, Brad. Item C two, consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty two oh five to add chapter seventeen point nine two water efficient landscaping and conservation standards to the Santa Clara City zoning ordinance. Mr. McNulty?
Thanks, Mayor Rosenberg, and I can be brief. As you all know, we've been working on this for several months. The mayor discussed this earlier today during his state of the city address, which was nice, and we had talked about that for quite some time. We've worked with the conservancy district as well as other cities in our county, Washington County have done so as well. Just to give you an update, on December ninth of twenty twenty one and January thirteenth of twenty twenty two, city staff did discuss this item with the planning commission. We did have representatives of the Southern Utah Home Builders Association there on January thirteenth. Approximately two weeks ago, on February tenth of twenty twenty two, the planning commission held a public hearing on this item. A few residents did share their opinion on the ordinance, however, staff and the planning commission were able to answer those questions. And just going back, taking it one more step back, we did have two discussions with the city council on February second and February ninth. Where we also had Mari and Stacy from the Southern Utah Home Board Association here to join in our discussion and answer questions. So going to a recommendation, the planning commission heard this item on February tenth, twenty twenty two, and forwarded a positive recommendation to the council. Planning staff recommends that the city council approve the code amendment creating chapter seventeen point nine two water efficient landscaping and conservation standards. Now, we have an adopting ordinance that Matt has been working on along with myself, staff to put together. We have that prepared and ready for council approval. I did get a few comments from council member Mathis this afternoon, and I had a chance to sit down with Matt later in the day and make those slight changes. On the bottom of page eight, item B four, I just want to go through these real quick. Let's see, page eight, B four, one more down. It needs to read the city instead of a city. So item four, the second sentence will say the city may make minor exceptions rather than a city. And then if we just scroll down to the next page, right there, you stop there. This was a comment I had in previous copies. It just says new addition to this section promoting secondary water use, which is good, so we'll strike that out, which is just a statement. And then there's just one more, if we go to page eleven of thirteen. So just very small items as we've addressed items previously after previous meetings. If we go to item seventeen ninety two oh five oh, and just the first paragraph there, page eleven of nineteen. It says in the second line, comma, except where landscaping will be solely be irrigated. It will say except where landscaping will solely be irrigated with a private non municipal source of water. So the first B will be removed. Otherwise, the the other additions have have been put in place by Matt and myself to address previous comments during the February second and February ninth meetings and some comments afterwards. And so we think we're there. It's a thirteen page document. We think it's ready to go. If you have any additional questions, Matt and I can answer those. Thank you.
Any questions for Jim, council?
Just a general, mayor, has any other cities adopted the ordinance yet, their ordinance specific, do we know?
I don't know who has adopted it.
I know that Washington City about two weeks ago had it on their work session agenda with the council. They've had a few meetings, but I don't know that they've adopted yet. And as you know, Mayor, St. George City did a temporary zoning ordinance just a few weeks ago.
They were waiting to see the results of the legislature, if it would have any impacts on it before they adopted it.
I did want to make one, one point that I didn't put in my memo. The planning commission's recommendation was positive, however, they suggested that we review the ordinance in three to six months to see if any changes would be needed based on this session and any other changes that could happen in the next few months. But we knew we had a hard deadline and we needed to adopt something by the first of March to to meet our pending ordinance that's in place currently. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Any other questions, council?
Mayor, will the new development on Vineyard have secondary water?
Yes.
Okay.
The Vineyard Phase eleven.
Yeah. I was just, I was looking at the where if they're larger than half lot, they use half to secondary irrigation to have a garden. I was trying to think of where that might apply. I thought maybe there, but.
They do have secondary water shares that Kents tend to agree that would, you know, be coming to be able to provide secondary water.
Okay.
If nothing further, I would move that we approve the water ordinance, which is seventeen point. What is it?
No. Ordinance twenty twenty two.
Yeah, it's twenty twenty two oh five, if you want to just reference the ordinance.
Yeah, seventeen.
Ordinance number twenty twenty two.
Twenty two seventeen point nine two, twenty twenty two point oh five. Add to the, the landscaping and conservation standards for city of Santa Clara. And I would like to adopt that, that the planning commission suggested with a review in six months.
Yes.
Second.
A motion by Danny and a second by Lena to approve the ordinance twenty twenty two dash O five. Creating chapter seventeen point nine two, the water efficiency landscaping and conservation standards as presented with the condition that it be reviewed over the next six months by the planning commission. Any question on that motion, council? Says an ordinance, roll call vote, Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Item number four D. Work with me. Care four three, excuse me, consider approval of a final plat for Desert Village Phase Three located north of Harmond's and east of the city fire station along Rachel Drive. Drake Howes, the applicant. Jim?
Thanks, Mayor Rosenberg, and I talked to Drake today, and it looks like he's just walking in, so the applicant is here. Why don't we go down and look at the preliminary plat just below the permit, the report, one more page, here we go. So the applicant, Drake How, he's requesting final plat approval for phase three of the project. This plat includes a total of sixty eight units within eleven multifamily townhome buildings. The subject property for phase three is six point three five acres in size. Just so everyone knows, and I think you're aware, this is the final phase of the project, phase one and two have been recorded. A lot of the improvements have been put in place, including vertical construction for phase one, which was sixty four, sixty eight units. I'm getting the number wrong, sixty four, that is phase three. And then phase two, they've been working on some permits and we'll be pulling those for phase two soon, that includes fifty three units. A lot of the roads are put in place already. They have pulled permits for their amenities, which includes a pool and his and her changing room for phase one. The phase three area includes some other amenities. So if we go to the landscape plan, we'll scroll down to that. Here's phase three, and you can see on the south, when you look at that landscape plan, you can see the pool area in phase one. But you can see that amenity area in phase three, and that includes a park, a picnic area with the trees and 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 maybe some barbecue areas and some pickleball that we've been talking about as well as a trail system. So I've been working with Drake How to try to get the amenities that would be best for this phase of the project or for the overall project, what's really needed or necessary for the future residents. The pickleball is good, the the landscape or park area is good. Should we have a picnic pavilion, barbecue pit? What is it? That that's something that we're still working on, and he has some ideas with that, but we're going to get something good for the future residents there. In in reviewing this project, it's in a PDR previously during preliminary, the council and planning commission already addressed building materials, the overall site plan for the project. The roofing, which is a tile roofing, the stucco colors, two car garages, things of that nature were all discussed previously. As was the drought tolerant landscaping and landscaping with limited lawn areas to promote water efficiency and conservation. We're aware that the projects north of Harmond's and in the area across from the intermediate school off of Rachel Drive. We don't really have issues of concern, but in the report, we talked about we've identified items that need to be addressed with the final plat. So we talk about public streets and dedications, so the streets are public. The streets need to be put in and dedicated for phase three prior to plat recordation, or they could also bond for those improvements. I believe some of the improvements are in, others are not. Project amenities, we require that the project amenities located in phase three need to be installed or bonded for prior to obtaining certificates of occupancy for individual dwelling units. Project landscaping, we're saying all required landscaping for phase three needs to be installed or bonded for prior to obtaining certificate of occupancy for individual units. Now fencing, we we want to make sure there's some project fencing on the south boundary of the site. If we scroll down, there is a fencing plan. You can see in orange there, that's the area where they're proposing to put a metal fence approximately three and a half to four feet high on that south end. Because there's a definite change in grade between the grade of the project itself versus the grade below where the city trail is. There's a retaining wall. If we scroll one more, you'll see that they're proposing an iron, a little bit more an iron fence, and you see that there. So a metal style fence, three and a half to four feet tall to keep a small child or others from, you know, perhaps someone falls or loses their balance off the edge and to avoid a liability issue and deal with any potential risk, that's what we're asking them to do. If we scroll down one more, you'll see, and if we can open that up, you'll see the existing privacy and courtyard fencing between units. So they do have a trellis area with a cinder block wall that allows for some privacy behind individual units if you want to sit outside or barbecue. So we are requiring that that fencing needs to be installed for safety purposes prior to obtaining any certificate of occupancy for individual units, and that would be those homes that back onto that area. Water availability, we just adopted ordinance twenty two zero five. It has been set and adopted for water conservation, water efficiency and conservation. The applicant will be subject to that and is aware of that, as many of our applicants recently are aware and will be subject to that because we've had that ordinance or moratorium in place for six months previously. As far as our reviewing departments, they will need to submit a geotechnical report for phase three prior at the time of billing permits middle. As far as the power department, public utility easements are required on that final subdivision plat. Public works, also the public utility easements are required to be shown on the final plat and a final mylar with signature blocks is required. At this point, planning staff. Sorry, I'm going to take a step back, we'll go to our planning staff recommendation. The planning commission did hear this item on February tenth of twenty twenty two and forwarded a positive recommendation to the council. Planning staff recommends that the city council approve the final plat for the Desert Village Phase Three subdivision subject to the conditions as outlined in the staff report. And I wanted to make you aware of condition number six, which cites our new city ordinance twenty two oh five, that's been adopted tonight. And the other conditions are structured around the items that I brought up previously in the staff report, making sure that the applicant's subject to those and follows those prior to, you know, moving people in. We've dealt with that a little bit recently, and we want to make sure certain project benchmarks are met, the amenities are in, and the roads are dedicated, things of that nature, prior to granting any certificates of occupancy for individual units in the area. So that's what I have at this point. If the mayor and council have questions, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Questions for Jim? The only one I had is the one we talked about at planning commission, the will serve letter. Do they have such a thing yet?
Well, that that's what we're trying to figure out and understand. Now, with Desert Village, the conservancy district's familiar and aware of the project, and Drake and How and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, so that's not going to be an issue, but for a new project, that could be. And we just adopted our ordinance, and we've been told that they would have such a device, so here we are, you know, putting an ordinance in place, but they need to back us a little and do their part as well. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, questions?
So what happens on a project if they physically can't get a letter and we're requiring it? What's the option for the developer?
Counsel? Legal counsel?
Well, Jim and I had this very conversation today. I mean, it's pretty hard for us to impose a a requirement like that if the water district isn't gonna, isn't gonna do will serve letters, so we, we just need to understand what the, what the conservancy district is planning to do and what their requirements are going to be and what, you know, at what stage they're going to require that before we can really do anything. So I would think that any condition that we set requiring a will serve letters certainly is going to be subject to that being put into place with the water district. If they don't put it in place, then we can't really require it.
So would we need to make that as part of our motion?
I think that would be smart, yeah.
Is that something that we come back in six months after the legislative session and we see what everybody's doing, if the dust settles, and then we make some changes to to our new ordinance?
Could, I mean, and maybe it won't, maybe it won't take that long.
Yeah.
You know, I I think we can come back at any point, as soon as we have something from the water district and know what their plan is, I think we can come back and try to integrate it.
Yeah, we can come back sooner. The recommendation is within six months, so.
Maybe a question for the developer, and with the townhome situation, which we we have platted townhomes, correct?
Yes.
They're individually platted. Is there CCNRs with this project?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so if you sell, I I understand the plan is for random, but if you were to sell individually, there are some controls in place to take care of that.
There sure is. Great question. Yes.
I want to ask you, is that the preferred fence, the the picture that we're seeing? Like, is that something you picked? And I just worry about the longevity of that style of fencing. I know that for not.
The metal fence on the south edge.
Yeah.
Roll up to that.
Yeah, that is something that we picked that we're recommending. I guess, let me, just a little background, Jared, you have the advantage, most of you do, were on council when this was approved. What, two and a half or more years ago, the preliminary plat? And as you recall, at the time, project fencing was a very explicit part of the discussion of the approval, et cetera. And the time staff really recommended that there be no project fencing, but for the fence on the very northern part of our boundary with the Naloa, or I guess now Sullivan's own it, but just towards Bella Vista. And everyone else was going to be remain open and and unobstructed with the fence. But to the point that Jim mentioned in the staff report, because of the great difference between where our pads are and the new city trail there, which we love, it is, this this fence is there for a safety perspective as as opposed to like a project perimeter privacy fence. And so we're just trying to keep people, as as Jim already noted, from falling off, because in places it's a good probably five, six, maybe even some higher difference of of grade, so we're, I mean, if you have, Jared, I'm certainly open to another idea, but the the intent is to have a fence there that will be sturdy, this is a, this is a steel fence that's powder coated, and certainly enough rails where we could keep the little children from kind of, you know, crawling through and then, you know, having an accident, we want to avoid that. We we don't have any concern with the longevity of this. This particular one has been there for nearly twenty years, and it's in really good shape. I mean, over decades, there may be some maintenance that's needed, but the HOA that's in place can handle that maintenance.
Okay, that sounds good.
Have you had any issues with boys ages eight to fourteen? Climbing over the fence, jumping over the fence, shooting things off through the fence?
You know, I, it, no, we haven't, because we haven't built here yet.
I would climb.
I was, I was also going to say, it's really hard to regulate stupid, but I don't know how to start there.
Where are the parents? But boys that age are going to explore new things, so, yes. That's what the washes are for.
Or is it a relative?
Land softly at the bottom.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a couple of things if the council.
Sure, go ahead, Matt.
Drake, I saw your update on the the old sewer easement, just for the council's information, there's an old historic sewer easement that goes through this area, which Santa Clara City actually already agreed to release any claim to it, but on the title records, it's in the name of Ivan City. And as I understand it, that's been submitted to Ivan's, you're just waiting for a signature on that, is that still?
Exactly, yeah. We reached out to Mr., is it Pullman, the city manager? Thank you. Mr. Pullman, he forwarded on to another person that I know that I'm drawing a blank on, city engineer?
Chuck Gillett.
Chuck, and Chuck replied, just, I think that's what I forwarded to you about a week or ten days ago, that they're literally just waiting for the mayor's signature and then they'll record it.
Okay. I do think that's important to get, to get taken care of with this phase. I mean, this is, this is the last phase in.
Because phase two, it also ran through phase two, and
Right.
we we've done all the work, right? So the the line has been abandoned. We've installed new sewer lines in the public streets that Jim mentioned, and so the the sewer is is, you know, taken care of, but the the legal aspect, we need to tie up.
Yeah, we just need to, it's just clearing that off of the title, essentially.
Yep.
So, but but with that, I I would ask the council, if you're, if you're going to approve this final plat, that we do it subject to having that signature so it can be recorded in advance of the plat. And then the second thing, Drake, is I just wanted to ask you about the I think we're still waiting on a, on a partial release of a trustee on that exchange.
Yeah, and I've reached out to our legal counsel, knowing that that would come up in tonight's meeting, and we would very much support that as a condition of approval.
Okay.
I think it needs to be. I'm sure. I think it needs to be. Um, I'm sure you're going to recommend that.
Yeah.
Uh, and anyway, we're, we have a lender on the project and we're trying to figure out the right person from their organization to sign it, but we're that close.
Okay. My only other question about that is uh, just looking at the plat. And I can't tell, you know, without getting into the details of legal descriptions, whether the, whether the boundary, that southern boundary on the plat actually reflects the, the exchange boundary versus the, versus the old boundary. So I, I just wanted to ask if you knew if that had been addressed on the plat.
I was good with my notebook because my answer is I don't know that for sure, but I'm going to write that down to go and confirm that.
Well, I, I think we can find out. I think, I think Rosenberg Associates did the work on both. And so
Yeah, they did.
we just need to have somebody compare those and confirm that. But we just need to make sure that it reflects that the post-exchange boundary so that we're not plating, you know, property that isn't owned by, by you.
This is the exchange with Silverado?
Yes. Yeah. So I just want to make sure that boundary on the north side of the, of the
Trail.
trail is, is accurate. Um, so it, anyway, on those two items, on the, on the abandonment of the sewer easement and on the um, on the partial reconvenance uh, for the land exchange, if, if we could just include those as conditions and that'll, that'll give me the right to just hold the plat until we have those things resolved and then we can release it for recording.
Right. Thank you, Matt.
How do you want the wording on the will serve letter?
Um. I would maybe put it, we'll comply with the requirements of the water district prior to recordation. Right now he has to, they're taking care of it. It's building permit still, right, Drake? You go in and pay the water district impact fees and then he brings that slip back here and then he can get his building permit. We just follow the existing process until water district establishes the will serve requirement. And if they decide they're not going to do the will serve, then we'll have to go back and amend the ordinance.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Those are all good comments.
Excuse me, mayor, can I ask a question about that discussion? Would that, if you needed to go back and amend the ordinance, would that hold up the timing of the, our permit issuance?
I think if she conditions her motion so that they meet the requirements of our conservancy district.
Not subject to.
You know, then you wouldn't be subject to the will serve letter for this plat.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And if, but if they change their requirements, you're subject to the new requirements for your building permits. I don't know how they're going to deal with the, the platted lots that haven't paid the impact fees yet. I mean, I would think they'd be vested, but we'd need them to state that. City can't guarantee you water, basically. We got to make them do it. Any other questions, council? Okay, if anybody's ready, I'd take a motion.
Yeah, I'll make it. Um, I make a motion that we approve the final plat for Desert Village Phase Three. Um, subject to three conditions. One is the abandonment of the Ivan's sewer easement signed by the mayor. Two, a partial reconvenance on the land exchange. And three, that the applicant can play with the current um requirements as presented at the water district in lieu of a will serve letter if it's not available.
Second. A motion by Lena and a second by Ben. Is there any question on that motion or the three conditions?
Mayor, I would just clarify, Lena, on your first condition, um, that it's the Ivan's mayor that we're waiting for, not, not our mayor. So.
So would that be condition eight? And then there's a condition nine and a condition ten because we're adding three conditions to the previous conditions in the staff report?
Yeah, there's some other conditions in the staff report you want to include in that.
Yeah.
Lena. Page three.
Let me go back.
And number, and six of the, of the staff recommendations has to do with the will serve letter.
Right.
So it would be that amendment to six and then the conditions eight and nine.
Correct.
Conditions eight and nine.
And I'll amend it to include those other conditions.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the final plat for Desert Village Phase Three. Um, as presented, including the nine conditions. Um, seven of which are, are specified in the, in the planning commission recommendation with the change to condition number six to meet the requirements of the water conservancy district, um, if the will serve letter is not available. And then the addition of the, the two title issues that Matt mentioned, abandoning the sewer easement from Ivan's and the exchange. Um, was what was it called?
Reconvenance?
The reconvenance, um, affecting the boundary that those are all signed and provided prior to recording of the final plat. Any question on that motion? This is a, and on ordinance, this is final plat approval. So let's do roll call vote, Ben?
Aye.
Lena?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jared?
Aye.
The ayes have it five zero. Thank you, Drake. Appreciate you. Okay. Planning commissions change their meeting schedule. This is item C four. Um, the meeting schedule is in there. They meet twice a month now. On the second and fourth Tuesday each month at five thirty. Um, we need to update the previously approved meeting schedule. Any question on item four? And I would look for a motion.
I move that we approve the amendment to the Santa Clara City public meeting schedule as presented.
Second. I've got a motion by Jared and a second by Danny. Any question on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, council. Mayor and council reports, Ben?
Mayor, just a great job today.
Thank you.
Thank you to you. Thanks to staff. Good day. City's in good hands.
That it?
That's all I'm going to bring up.
I'll say ditto, but I have to be brief on two things, but I will be brief. Um, we had our tri shack meeting um this last week and a couple of things to report. Um, the city for usage of the pool, we represented seven point six percent of all the usage. We were the lowest of the three cities, so.
An up or down trend?
It, it is up from two thousand and twenty. Um, it's actually, I, going back to two thousand and eighteen, it's the highest we've ever had. So it has increased. Um, they will be replacing this year all of their sand filtration units with a regenerative filtration unit, reduces the microns in the water. Um, and it should save them probably one point one, one point two million gallons of water. Um, I did find out that that entire facility, including their landscaping and everything, is on culinary water. So they don't have the option of doing anything secondary even for their landscape irrigation, which is interesting.
I noticed they're pulling out some of their outside landscaping.
They are. They're going to zero scape and to try and reduce the water use at the, at the pool. Um, they are considering a rate increase. Um, the St. George council members that sit on that um committee, um, think it's passed due. They haven't had one since really two thousand, so I would expect to see some rates increased more significantly for the non-resident rate. But they will probably see a small increase for resident rates as well. So that'll be brief. Okay. Then my legislative update, I'm only going to bring up two things. One, um, House Bill three ninety-nine, which was the government records amendment. That's the, basically the Garrity bill. Um, they did get it passed in the House, which is a great thing. It's been sent to the Senate. So um, if you talk to any of the senators in our area, ask them to vote for that. It's, it's a good bill. Um, and if nobody knows what Garrity is, ask me after and I'll explain it so that we don't take Ben's time. And then um, House Bill four sixteen, this is one um that you may get an alert on from the League of Cities and towns. Um, it is a property rights ombudsman, let just piece of legislation where they are wanting to have the um, Opera Office review all land use decisions by a city and ordinances annually to see if we are putting, I don't know, see if we're putting them in place and complying with state law. It also allows individuals to be able to request from the Opera Office. They don't even have to have standing in anything. They can just request for an advisory opinion to see if a city is in compliance. It's a really bad bill. Um, so FYI, that's House Bill four sixteen. So if you talk to any of our representatives, they've got less than a week to get it out of the House to the Senate. They have to be in before Tuesday. So if you talk to any of them, it would be something we'd probably want to oppose.
Okay.
So those are my two highlights. There's nothing yet on S B thirty-four and the housing. It's, it was still being written as of yesterday. So. And I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Krista?
I'll just second what Ben said and great job today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Nothing.
Jared? Um, want to thank Kristelle for her footage that was really good in the presentation as well. The, especially the, the shot of the lance, the landslide, that was very striking. I hadn't seen in that angle or that light or whatever. That was pretty impressive. Um, and then my other thing is I did reach out to Roger Timberman to talk about a phasing plan and about vineyard, and he reached out to his engineers and said, we'll hold vineyard off. So that should be okay.
Great. Do we have any update on when they're starting construction?
I don't have anything yet, no.
All right. Appreciate that. Thank you, Jared. Uh, the M P L met and talked about some projects and got our training done. I had one question. Do we need to do the ethics training? Do we need to remind council to do that?
Yeah. Chris, ethics training every year for council? Council need to do ethics training each year.
We want to do that together, council. Yeah, I know you can go online and do it.
Yeah, I think, is it the state auditor that has it?
Yeah.
That provides it.
There's a link. I did it.
You're done already? Okay.
It only took fifteen or.
Okay, just maybe just a reminder for everybody to get it done.
Yeah, for sure.
It's not a test. Take the training.
It's not like food handlers that took an hour and had to pass. Yes, you had to pass.
Okay. And I think that's about all. I, I do appreciate the staff coming today and supporting me and and the standing ovation was nice. You guys follow instruction really well. Um, and I appreciated that. And Kristelle did a awesome job. So again, she's amazed me with her talents and her skills. So thank you, Kristelle, for making me look really good today.
How about Gary, how about Gary on the microphone?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the mics, you know, it's amazing that the mic would make it through the budget every year. But that's okay. I do, I was, the one thing I panicked on today was holding a mic.
Yeah.
Would have, yeah, that may have taken it over the top.
You know, it's funny, we, we bought a mic holder to that thing and Scott installed it on it and then came out there and like, where is it? It's not, somebody took it off.
Somebody took the mic, right?
And then when they put it away, found it, it was tucked on the bottom of the thing, but somebody's taken, had taken it off. I don't know who in one of the events or whatever took it off, but there was one there, so there's no, you don't have to hold a mic.
It worked out great. It worked out just perfect. Um, staff, really quick, anybody want to make a report tonight? Chief, I would like to hear from you. Come up and talk about the incident. If you can.
Sure. Well, we've been really quiet about it until today. That's where I was this afternoon in the interviews. But uh, as you know, we had a pursuit go through here uh last week where the guy had um, was offered a ride and everybody thought that they were related where they weren't, where he took this child and went through town here and on the pursuit. And uh, they went through here probably close to seventy-five, eighty miles an hour. It was incredible. I was surprised they made the turn. And uh, you had the suspect, you had the motor officer, and then you had Jaren and Rich in on the pursuit. And uh, what happened is he, he just grabbed this child and was angry and was holding the child with the gun to its head. They were going down the road and actually fired at Jaren and Rich. So I called our officers off when they got to the, it, uh, down there by the chivalry heads because there's no reason for us to go up the hill because there was fifteen, twenty people involved in it. Nick, Nick Holman went all the way down and as you know, there was a standoff down there of sorts. And it's a Mojave case and they've been up here this afternoon interviewing our officers. So we've been kind of not talking about it because it's an active investigation. But uh, it was a horrible situation for the officers. It's one of those things that, you know, you just happens once in a while. And um, Nick Coleman is one of the snipers down there and they was positioned and they were given uh, um, the okay to do what they needed to do because of this individual's, what he was doing. He was literally holding the baby and waving the gun. And we had a drone and stuff down in there. And uh, of course, you know, uh, the SWAT officer, you know, fired the, the shot and uh, luckily the baby wasn't there. We, I, I, I honestly believe he was going to kill that child. It was just a matter of time, moments. Uh, so it was a very, very horrible thing to have happen. But uh, I, I was really, I have to tell you, I'm extremely proud of our officers. They, it's hard to back off a pursuit when you're on it. But when I told them to get off of it, they did and it continued. But then I went ahead and made the decision to send Nick down there. Uh, that's about all that I can speak to at this point. It's not our investigation, but uh, um, it was, it was a horrible situation for us.
Well, so. Thank you for sharing. Please let the officers know. We appreciate them.
Yeah, and I probably should have put more information out there, but we were instructed not to make any comments to anybody about it. So now that their interviews are over, well, they're not quite over, but they're getting there. But it was a marvelous job. You know, we live in a really interesting place because it uh, it happened in another state and that brings all kinds of different challenges with the investigation and evidence gathering. We had a crime scene right out here. We had to go out there and get on our hands and knees and find around. And, and we don't really have much authority other than hot pursuit, which was the case at this point. Uh, you know, so it brings up a lot of challenges. So, but officers did well.
Good.
And our other two officers in training are doing well. I'll bring them in. So does Ralph training to introduce them to the council.
Great.
And so things are going well.
Okay, sir. It's good to see you.
Good to be here.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Anybody else have a report? They absolutely must talk to council about tonight. Okay. And we don't have executive session, right?
No.
You folks came in late. Were you here for a specific item? Okay, because I'm just about to call for a motion to adjourn.